The first item on our agenda is recognition of the Spelling Bee participants. If any of you attended the Spelling Bee, it was really something to behold as it is every year, and you know vocabulary is the name of the game, and we're very proud of our students. So we'd like to honor all of you. Dr. Chase?
Would you care to do it with me? Good evening, community. Good evening to our Spelling Bee participants, our families, everyone who is here, our board members. Mr. Warner and I take such pleasure in this part of our Spelling Bee acknowledgements each year because it's just an honor to see our students demonstrate such poise, such confidence, to demonstrate how academically adept they are. And so today, we get to celebrate you all for a job well done. So, Mr. Warner, I don't know if you would like to add more words?
In the Middle Ages, you had a person called a bard or a shop, and they had what they called their word hoard, H-O-A-R-D, and it meant their treasure. And the idea was that the more words they knew, the better story they could tell, and the better they could do their jobs. We're not bards and shops today, but many, many of the jobs that you'll do when you're grownups will involve the words you know, and the more words you know and the greater your command of the language, the better jobs you can have. So it's very, very important to learn the vocabulary, and it will serve you well throughout your entire life.
Well said. So I see some of you adorning these lovely shiny medals and these wonderfully designed t-shirts, and you'll have an opportunity to show them off in just a second. I have to tell you, students, my school board is so excited to meet you all because you're like the rock stars of the school district right now. It's just amazing. So they're excited to meet you. They are honored to stand with you, to take a picture. There you go. That's right there. That's right. You remember that, right? And just to take a picture with you. And for those of you who were in the worker bees round, second and third graders, you guys will have an opportunity to compete to go to Washington DC very, very soon. And again, and I said this last year, if any parent feel that their child is capable of competing in that bumblebee round, we're more than happy to have your child compete just to get a feel of it. I think it's just an amazing opportunity for our students. I do want to share again with the community that we are the only school district in Westchester County to send a student to Washington DC to participate in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Less than 300 children from around the world, not the country, but around the world compete in this spelling competition, and we're so happy that we have a seat at the table. So congratulations to all of our participants. Mr. Warner, let's call the worker bees.
All right. Would you like to have the board stand up as well?
They can do anything they'd like because they're just so honored. They're so honored to be in the presence of our spelling participants. And while the board is gathering and getting into their position, I would like to also acknowledge Ms. Anne Marie Shovelin, who's here, one of our Spelling Bee coordinators, and I hope Ms. Shovelin will help me with the certificates for both the worker bee and the bumblebee round. Let's give Ms. Shovelin a round of applause. She volunteered her time to help make the sixth annual Spelling Bee what it is, and I would be remiss if I did not remind everyone that our Spelling Bee Day each year is also the Bill Carter Day. The board passed a resolution identifying every Spelling Bee Day as Bill Carter, and as you know, Bill Carter was the one who took us under his wings to make the Spelling Bee what it is, and so we're forever grateful to him for that. All right, so without any further delay, we'll call up our worker bees, and you'll come get your certificate. And once you get your certificate, we're going to ask that you grace our board members with your presence and stand next to them and shake their hands, and we're going to take a picture at the end. Is that all right, worker bees? All right. And then, of course, your paparazzi, the parents want to take pictures too, so you've got to stand there and smile for a while, all right? It's all good. It's going to happen for a very, very long time. Get used to it. All right, is Deana here? Okay.
Cilio.
Is it Cilio? Beltron? Okay, is Dylan Blair here? Conrad? All right, moving right along. Is Aiden Davenport here?
No.
All right, Brent Davenport. Is Hannah DiNunzio here? Hannah! Is Zoe Dolman here? What about Joshua?
Eduardo.
Eduardo? That's not a D up there. Edward, sorry, excuse us. Congratulations. Melanie Fajardo, are you here, Melanie? Hallie Finichell. Elizabeth Fleming. Chloe Fuentes. Chloe! Natalia Gabrielle. All right, Natalia. Nathaniel Garcia. Juan Galav... Galavnan? I think I absolutely messed that one up. Lily Gordon. James Greenslade. All right, James. Is Shane here? Leslie. What about Diane Manuel? All right, Megan Marzella. Is Landon? I saw Landon walk in with a trophy. Okay, Landon, there we go. Landon, Landon, you placed second place? Landon is our third place winner for the worker bees round, so let's give Landon a round of applause again. Get the trophy, bring the trophy up there, too. The board members want to see your trophy. Is Vanessa Nyambi here? There you go, Landon. The name is spelled R-A-L-U-C-H-U-K-W-U. Okay, all right. Is Anaya here? Osorio. Okay, and Wimpanga? Brianna Owens? All right, Brianna, come on up, honey. Congratulations. Is Eileen Platero here? Ariana Reed? McKenna Ritchie? Kalen Ricketts. All right. Come on up. Congratulations. Stand with the school board. Deanna Simmons. Is Kayden Simon here? Rachel? Okay. Is Madison Williams here? What about, is that an I? Inana Wilson? All right, come on. Pretty dress. Congrats. Is Julia here? Julian is our first place speller for the worker bees round. Congratulations to you. So the worker bees who are going back to their seats, we want you to see the bumblebees because you are going to become a bumblebee very, very soon. I see a little bumblebee buzzing around already, but you will soon become a bumblebee, and I just want you to, to, to just also stay here to acknowledge those students who participated, to compete in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. So I'm going to ask Ms. Ashley Jackson, I see her here, there you go, Assistant Principal for Woodlands Middle High School, and Ashley's concentration is the middle school, I'm going to ask Ashley to please come up, Ms. Jackson, with Ms. Shovelin, as we acknowledge students from grades four through eight. So, all right, is Vivian Alfonso here? All right, Vivian. Anisa Ali, are you here? Well, we're going to clap for Anisa anyway. Is Janai here? Desmond Raymond Cologne. Constant Davis, I saw her. There we go. I'm getting tall. Eric Foss, are you here? There we go. Eric placed number two in the bumblebees round. He's our second place winner. Let's give it up for Eric. Is Emma Hoffman here? Daniel Holmes. Is Casanique Johnson, our second place winner, is she here? I mean, third place, I apologize. Third place. Nope, she's not here. Sophia Larria. Is Leonardo Leonardo had to compete against his brother in the Spelling Bee, so that's all right. Leo did well. Is Nicholas Valen here? Stand right here. Nicholas will be representing the Greenberg Central School District and the Theodore Community Center at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in May. Let's give it up for Nico. Awesome. Is Denise here? Duff? Is, I saw Amaya. Amaya, come on. Is Trevor here? Ms. Harshita Shet. Brooke Taylor. Come on, Brooke. Excellent. Traceon. Is Abigail here? And what about Michael? Is Nyla Walker here? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, school board members, I present to you our bumblebees. Okay, you want to take these? Which one, the bumblebees? Last name, oh, wait, hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute. We have another student who just walked in. Um, last name, Okeek, I believe. You, no, come here, you're going to, tell me. Tell everyone, how do you pronounce that?
Ralachuku.
Is Ralachuku, did I say it right? Thank you. That was a lot of pressure. Is he here? There you go. Ralachuku, congratulations to you. Now, Ralachuku's a little late, and he missed the picture with his group, and I'm going to ask our students in the four through eight category, our bumblebees, is it okay if he takes a picture with you guys? Is that all right? While I have everyone's attention, again, I would like to thank Ms. Anne Marie Shovelin, also Ms. Ashley Jackson, for being here in support of our spellers. I also would like to, again, publicly acknowledge our judges who took time out of their very busy schedule. Some of them faced challenges with their own electricity not working and all sorts of things, but yet they were committed to be a part of our sixth annual Spelling Bee, and for that, we are definitely grateful. So I'd wish to acknowledge Ms. Lena Anderson, President of the NAACP White Plains-Greenberg Chapter, Ms. Judith Beville, the Greenberg Town Clerk. Paul Finer showed up, and Paul Finer showed up as we were all walking out. He had another engagement, and I don't know if any of you had a chance to see him in a parking lot, but he too definitely deserves acknowledgement. Sergeant Norman Hall of the Greenberg Police Department, Tina Harper, who is the Recreation Leader of the Theodore D. Young Community Center, Chief Howard Reese of Fairview Fire Department, Chief Edward Rush of the Hartsdale Fire Department, Izette Swavy Lipton, Board Chair of the Theodore D. Young Community Center, Alfreda Williams, our Westchester County legislator, as well as Frank Williams, who is the Executive Director of the White Plains Youth Bureau. Our Huggers, Mona Freitag, and Edith Bly Jenkins are also deserving of our thanks for participating in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Once again, congratulations to all the students. Whether you're here or not, we congratulate each and every one of you for a job well done. You guys represent what's wonderful about our school district, and so thank you for being who you are and continue to be your best selves. I look forward to hearing about your successes in the future, and congratulations to you and to your families. Nico, we wish you well. This is your first time going out there to Washington DC. Have a great time. You're going to meet kids from all over the world. It's going to be a wonderful experience. They have an entire week dedicated to just you, getting to know you. Have fun. Take it all in, but more importantly, have fun. And we can't wait to hear about your experience when you come back. Congrats once again.
Mr. Newland, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes. I was there at the Spelling Bee, and what an excitement, an excited moment from all the kids who participated. Even though you all didn't get first or second and third place, you're all winners as far as I'm concerned. It took a lot of courage to get up there on that stage and, and take on the word that was given to you to spell. And I was very impressed, and I was very, very proud of the parents and our Spelling Bee, the students who participated in the Spelling Bee. So congratulations again. You ought to be proud of yourself. And I'd like to give a round of applause to those who are here and those who are not here tonight, once again.
Any other comments from any of the board members? All right, moving on. Next item on our agenda is executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons being considered for board action this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're in closed session. See you in an hour.
Or less, right? Or less.
All right, the next item on our agenda is statements from the public. It looks like we have Sidney Collins. Sidney Collins? All right, she's not here. All right, then next up is Kay Jackson.
Good evening. I'm Kay Jackson, Chair of the Eighth Annual Greenberg Taste Off, and I'm joined today by members of the Falcons Nest Booster Club and alumni supporters. And by the way, this is our eighth annual Greenberg Taste Off. The Taste Off is a primary fundraiser for the Greenberg Central School District's Falcons Nest Booster Club. This year, not only are we supported by the Woodlands Middle High School PTSA and the Lois Bronze Children's Center, but we are also excited to be collaborating with the Woodlands Class of 2018, Key Club, and the Latin American Student Organization, LASSO, to help us produce another successful event in support of our students. Thanks to all of you, we've had 500 to 750 attendees of our attendees, and the net proceeds have been 10,000 or more of the last six years. Please help us reach our goal of 1,000 paid ticket holders by spreading the word. Over the years, the event has been a significant funding source for the PTSAs, awarded more than 12,000 in student-athlete scholarships, co-sponsored the annual athletic awards night in which all varsity student athletes and coaches attend at No Cross, and has given more than 5,000 to local nonprofits. Sponsorships are available, which include advertisement in the Taste Off program and on our website. To date, this year's $500 player sponsors are Douglas Shores &amp; Family, Party Line Tent Rentals, Royal Coach Lines, Theodore D. Young Community Center, Mohawk Day Camp, Century 21 Schneider Realty, Lee Burton of New York Life Insurance, and AFC Urgent Care. Our $250 fan sponsors are High Tech Cleaners, Janmar Trophy, David &amp; Kay Jackson, Haygood-Massie Family, Dr. Keith O. &amp; Barbara Roper, Sir Speedy Pleasantville, and the Greenberg Teachers Federation. You too can become a sponsor either individually, as part of a group or organization, at a minimum of $250. We look forward to seeing you at the Eighth Annual Greenberg Taste Off on Saturday, April 28th at noon in the Woodlands Gymnasiums. The Annual Greenberg Taste Off is Westchester County's most successful annual fundraising community event. Don't wait to pay more at the door. Get your tickets now at www eventbrite.com. That's W-W-W-E-V-E-N-T-B-R-I-T-E.com. You don't have to pay a service charge. Students, kindergarten through 12th grade are $10, and $20 for adults. Please ask any local restaurants, caterers, or businesses that you've had to pay, bill to, or receive a service from to donate a Penny Social or silent auction item with a value of $10 or more. If you can donate a service, for example, babysitting, tutoring, tennis with your favorite teacher or superintendent, a specialty dish, or any other wonderful and unique experience, that would be very much appreciated. If you need us to help you provide you with a gift certificate to complete or would like additional information, send an email to greenburgtto@gmail.com. That's G-R-E-E-N-B-U-R-G-H-T-O at gmail.com, or call 914-703-2615, and you'll reach me. Our donors will also be listed in the Taste Off program. Now for the exciting part. What happens on April 28th? You get to taste what you want of the 30 or more food items from the restaurants and caterers. You get to visit businesses to see what great services and products are available. You get to vote in any one or more of our competitive categories for best wings, best chili, best ribs, and best dessert, as well as the most engaging business. And you get to win at the Penny Social, consisting of multiple random drawings or a silent auction where you write down the highest bid for any item. This year, we're so proud to honor our distinguished district staff members, Shirley Crab, Woodlands Music Teacher, Karen Mallory Johnson, Richard J. Bailey Teacher, Teresa Robinson, Richard J. Bailey Teaching Assistant, Lena Amendola, Lee F. Jackson, Secretary to the School Principal, Mary Cirkin, Solomon Schechter Nurse, and Reggie Wilson, Woodlands Custodian. Last but not least, support the Shirley Shores Memorial Fund at the Lois Bronze Children's Center just by attending. 10% of our net proceeds will be donated to the center. As of today, all of our 36 onsite participant tables are accounted for. Onsite participants for the Eighth Annual Greenberg Taste Off include Acne Markets, AFC Urgent Care, Alvin &amp; Friends Restaurant, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, Erin Mark, Beauty Counter, Belcher's Catering, Dina Roselli, Arburn International, Century 21 Schneider Realty, Chris Novielli, David Lerner Societs, Clivia Jean's Soul Food Experience, Fairview Fire Department's Fire Safety Smokehouse, Fidelis Care New York will be bringing the Hot 97 Street Team and providing a children's activity, Frank's Food Court, Good for Girls Inc., Greenberg Police Department, Greenberg Central School District, Giro Giro, Hartsdale Fire Department, Sacred Seeds Enterprises LLC, Mel Sweet Treats, Darrell Thompson Prudential Financial Professional, Nesto's Pizza and Delivery, I'm sorry, Nesto's Pizza and Deli, North American Family Institute, Lee Burton, New York Life Insurance Company, Party Line Tent Rental, Pick 'n Roll Soul Restaurant and Lounge, Rita's of Ellsford, Rudy's Foods, Sports and Entertainment, Small Cakes.
Tracy, you need to wrap it up.
Oh, okay, Small Cakes, Cupcakeery and Creamery, The Ambitious Soul Business and Career Coaching, Theodore Young Community Center, Trader Joe's Grocery Store, T-Mobile White Plains, Union Baptist Church White Plains, New York, Wayback Burgers. And special thanks to the GCSD Board for volunteering to assist with the beverage station and the GCSD Administration for handling the voting station at the Taste Off. We thank you all, and we hope to see you attend the Eighth Annual Greenberg Taste Off on Saturday, April 28th, 2018 at noon. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rita Jones.
Okay, good evening. Before I ask my question, I'd like to thank some people here at Woodlands High School. This is late, but during the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund sale back in December, we had some wonderful support. The Key Club was just awesome. They just kept calling us, but the truck was late in coming in, and therefore they couldn't help us because the truck came in too late. But I want to give a special thank you to Mr. Sally, the custodian, and Mr. Anthony Palange. They were just fantastic. The truck came in at 7:00, I believe, and he was parking in the back parking lot where the teachers come in, so he had to park way down, and they got trucks and pulled all that fruit back into the room, and I thought that was just great. Without them, we really couldn't have done anything because I couldn't have pulled the trucks up. I mean, I couldn't have pulled those carts with the fruit back to it. So I just want to say a special thank you to them for their work. Mr. Richard Bass was just awesome also. He was supportive. He kept saying to me, he brought some students down, and he kept saying to me, whenever the truck comes in, I'll help you. So I want to thank everyone who brought fruit, and I want to thank the custodial staff, and especially Ms. and especially Mr. Bays for his work. Then I want to say that I was here for the Black History Month celebration, and every year I come and it gets better. And I just want to say, I see those teachers working day, late, and night, because I come here to meetings sometimes, and they're working way past their time. So I do hope we give them compensation for, some compensation for all the work that they do, because they're here early in the morning and I see them late at night. Last year I worked with them, but this year I didn't. So I think I've given thank you to most of the people. Okay, now for my question. On page, you have a different page here with the revised, you have that, this is a question from the community. I kind of think I know the answer, but she wants to know, and she looked at you on television. So you have 52 of 70 students being sent out of the district. She wants to know if these are primarily children in special education, or are they, and if they're special ed, and, or are they just private school students?
Can you, can you give me like an item number?
It's page, I think in my one at home it was page nine, but it's page seven, I believe. No, no, I'm sorry. Here is nine. The revised version is nine. Where health FDS contract, where the children are going to different school districts.
Ms. Jones, are you talking about G? The G section?
Yeah, but my one time should not be going because they're looking for pages.
Are you looking for health services for Eastchester or Elmsford?
Well, all of them. I think she counted about, she said at least 72 students going out of district for health, for services. So I don't know. It's, it's all of them. Elmsford, Hastings, Harrison, Mariner.
So in the consciousness of time, first of all, good evening, and thank you for your question. There could be a variety of reasons why a student is getting health services from a particular school district. So let's say if they go to a private or maybe a parochial school that happens to be in a particular school district, that particular school district will charge us for the health services. So it's not limited to students who are out of district placement for special needs purposes. It could be for a variety of reasons.
Okay, well, she'll hear that from you then. My last question is, we're, I'm getting a lot of calls from people saying that the teacher assistants are being phased out. I know last year, a lot of them got a package and they left, and somehow I don't think they were replaced. Now, maybe there's a good reason why they were not, or why you don't have them, but we would like to know the reason why many of the classrooms don't have teacher assistants.
As per the contract, teacher assistants are provided to teachers who might exceed a particular capacity. If they have not exceeded that capacity, therefore there isn't a need for a teacher assistant. It's not necessarily given a teacher assistant because you just want one. Doesn't work like that. So there could be a variety of reasons why a teacher assistant is not in the room. The district does not have a, and I want to be clear, does not have a desire to remove teacher assistants. We keep teacher assistants based on a need that we have in the district, and we will continue to analyze our needs of staffing. That's it.
So what you're saying is according to the contract, the teachers do not have to have a teacher assistant?
They do not, they are not required to have a teaching assistant.
Okay. And you find that it works? That's what I'm getting at, and that's what people are asking. Does it work?
It is working so far. We have classrooms that are functioning extremely well.
The children are functioning well?
My children are doing well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, policy presentations. We have several policy amendments to be considered for board adoption at the April 17th, 2018 meeting concerning committees, nondiscrimination, and anti-harassment in the school district, records management, searches and interrogations of students, medication administration, life-threatening health conditions, and ELL. Copies of these policies are available in the district clerk's office. They are also available in all the school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning these policies should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. Next up, our superintendent's report. Dr. Chase.
Good evening, everyone, once again, and I thank those of us, or those of you who actually shared at the podium. So we appreciate having community input. Just want to again congratulate the students who were here earlier, our spelling bee champions. I also would like to congratulate the committee of the Science Extravaganza, Fourth Annual Science Extravaganza. The word that I used on Twitter was epic. It was amazing. Well orchestrated. It was just, it was one of our best science displays that I've seen since I've been here. And so I want to congratulate the committee for a job well done. I'm going to continue to encourage our community to visit our social media, definitely our YouTube channel, visit our app, as well as our Facebook page, our Twitter, and our website to see what's happening in our school district. Sometimes you can't always come out to those meetings, and we do our best to televise meetings so that you can still be a part of it. Our Science Extravaganza was televised. I'm not sure if it's up yet, but, you know, our events are always televised, and they're always available for public consumption. So please check us out. We're doing amazing things in the school district. I also want to thank the parents who came out last night for our OUT information session. It was well attended. I know that many of our parents do work, and to come to a meeting right after school is not always easy when you have to go home and get your, attend to your family, and those parents were very attentive and they asked very thought-provoking questions, and we appreciate that. We encourage those parents to continue to ask questions as we begin to build this OUT program, and we do thank them for their support. I also want to thank parents who came out to listen to our speaker series with Dr. Teresa Taylor Williams. That was also well received, and it was well attended. I'm hoping that we can get more parents to come out to our next speaker series. Dr. Williams focused on students' behaviors as a result of trauma and PTSD, and as we know, that many children today endure circumstances that many of us can't begin to fathom, but yet they come to school and they do their best at school while dealing with also outside forces. And she talked about what we can do just as adults to support those students moving forward. So I hope for the next speaker series, you will come out. Budget Two presentation launched Sunday at 7:00. So if you hadn't had an opportunity to take a look at the budget, we're moving closer and closer to going, being under the tax cap. I think we will achieve that by Budget Three. You get to see the process of not only developing the budget, but the thought that goes into making those necessary reductions while at the same time not compromising what our students need, because that's priority. So please take a look at that. It is available on our website, through our YouTube channel, and it is also available on Facebook as well, and I think it's also running on the TV station. I just want to remind parents who probably did not get my phone blast or the app alert that tomorrow you might hear from me. It appears that we are in our, I kind of stole this from one of my favorite meteorologists, Lonnie Quinn, a four Easter, because this is our, come on, laugh, it was funny. I thought it was cute when he said it. But a four Easter, because this is the fourth nor'easter in a matter of six weeks. So we are all bracing ourselves for what is predicted to be a pretty massive storm. I know that some districts have already called a snow day, and I've received text messages where people are sharing with me, but New York City already called it, and Valhalla already, I know that. Greenberg, yep, New York City called it. Greenberg is waiting because, you know, you never know where the snowmaw is going to land. So we're going to wait until the morning with some of the other brave school districts, and again, you'll get a call at 6:15 if we need to modify the day. I also sent a letter home to parents about give-back days. So I want you to just be cognizant of that. You know, if we have to declare a snow day tomorrow, there's another give-back day that's already detailed in our calendar that you received back in March of 2017, so it's nothing new. But I just want you to be aware and just to be prepared for that. I do not have anything further. I am going to just say once again, please be safe. Please make sure that if you do have young children and you have to work tomorrow because your place of employment do not believe in snow days like school districts do, please make sure that you secure childcare tonight, just in preparation. So I wish everyone well, and I wish you all very warm thoughts. Thank you again.
Next up on our agenda, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report. Mary?
Good evening. The general fund beginning balance for January 2018 was $21,543,368.58. We received a total of $17,426,893.24 in receipts and issued $2,752,510.1 in payroll checks and another $2,876,615.41 in accounts payable checks. This was larger amount due to the efforts of the business office getting as many outstanding bills that were held up for various reasons. The ending balance of the general fund was $33,341,136.40. The district issued 975 payroll checks and 232 accounts payable checks for the month of January, all were audited.
Next up, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Terry.
Thank you, David. Governance Committee met on March 13th. Members attending were Dr. Chase, myself, Claudia Glazer, and Antoinette Darden-Sintra. The meeting convened at 6:34 PM. The committee has taken the board's comments into consideration and will not recommend removing the public comments portion from the work sessions. The committee will work on a proposal to create and develop a procedural, a procedure manual that will memorialize the running of a board meeting. At the start of, at the start of each fiscal year, the board will review the procedures for relevancy and approve them. The school board policy that references board meetings, Policy Number 1510, will reflect that the procedure manual is the official board meeting guide. And again, this is just a recommendation that we're going to be, a proposal that we're going to be recommending to the board for this change. Also, finally, Dr. Chase reminded the committee that the board norms should also be displayed at the work session. They've currently been available at the regular meeting, and as you can see, we have it in nice hot pink stationery, thanks to Ivy. Thank you, Ivy. The meeting, the next meeting of the Governance Committee is April 24th. The meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Other? I also have government relations.
Go ahead.
Are there any questions, though? I just wanted to ask if there are any questions about the Governance Committee. Okay. Government Relations. Dr. Chase, myself, Claudia Glazer, Antoinette Darden-Sintra, attended. The meeting started at 7:00 PM. We discussed Elmwood Village. Elmwood Village is the name of the proposed development going and where the Elmwood Country Club is on Dobbs Ferry, not Dobbs Ferry Road. Yes, it is Dobbs Ferry Road. Is it Dobbs Ferry Road? No, it's, um...
It's north of Dobbs Ferry Road.
Yes, yes, Dobbs Ferry Road. I just had a point. Thank you, thank you. The developers met with Dr. Chase and Elmwood Superintendent Mark Beaco, and Dr. Chase gave us a summary of that meeting. And according to Dr. Chase, the developers proposing building a 55-plus active community consisting of 60-family homes that would sell for $900,000. The sentiment that was raised at that meeting with the developers is that empty nesters aren't the most school-friendly segment of the population. In response, in response, the developer promised that we would have a front-row opportunity to educate prospective home buyers about the district. Now, I also shared at the meeting that the Greenberg Town Board, at the Greenberg Town Board Work Session on the 23rd, they, the developers also made a presentation, and it differed significantly from what they told Dr. Chase and Dr. Beaco. According to the meeting that I listened to, and I shared this link with all of you all, I don't know if you had a chance to, to listen to it. I got a summary here. The developers plan to construct an adult community for adults 55 and up. That's about the only thing that was in common. They're proposing to rezone the property to a full R20 from the current R20/R30 mix, and then overlay a planned use development. The resulting development would allow them to construct 175 townhouse units instead of single-family homes. An earlier proposal had 119 single-family homes. The developers haven't, children would be prohibited from living in the community because it's obviously an adult, over 55 active community, and what the developers say is that minimizes the expenses associated with having school-aged children. The developers haven't filed any of the required applications for the rezoning to begin or for construction. The financial considerations of the, of the proposal are these. Currently, the developer who now owns the land pays a little less than $300,000 in taxes to the town. According to them, 51% of that $300,000 is sent to the Greenberg Central School District. If, if either proposal is adopted, they estimate, they estimate that the parcel will generate 10 times the $300,000 amount, or close to $3 million. And of course, 51% of that would be allocated to the, to our school district. I, the board, the board, I'm sorry. The, the committee discussed having, if, if, if Dr. Chase agreed and Mary had the capacity to run some of the numbers for us, because again, we got these numbers from them. They made that presentation to the, to the town board, and so we just wanted to make sure the numbers were correct. So if Dr. Chase, if we could have Mary do some preliminary work to just confirm some of these numbers, that would be good. The only other thing that was said at the meeting, so that, that was pretty much it. Then there were some miscellaneous comments, but if anybody's curious about it, I would urge you all to go to the town board website and, and, and listen to the, listen to the transcript. So getting back to the government, government relations meeting, the only other thing we discussed was Gus Montanos and Antonia Hamblin from the law firm of Ingraham &amp; Smith said they can meet with us free of charge, and they're willing to come to our April 10th work session. The next meeting of the board, of the Government Relations Committee is April 24th. The meeting adjourned at 7:35 PM. Any questions?
Yes. Basically, there are further wrinkles to the, to the Elmwood issue which you discussed.
If I, if I could, okay, I mean, I, I don't have any other additional information. I mean, I'm just reporting to you what we discussed. If, if, you know, I mean...
I'm going to ask a question as to what we want to do for our next meeting. So basically, you did, you reported on two things. One is that Montanos would like to come to our April 10th meeting, and the further wrinkle is that Francis Sheehan of the, of the Greenberg Town, Town Councilman Francis Sheehan wants to come to the 10th, the meeting on the 10th as well, because he may also wish to discuss further additions and continued evolution of, of the Elmwood issue.
Right.
So the question is, what does the board think? Is it, is it all right to have both people come and visit us? I mean, we're legendary for having short meetings and long work sessions. Is it all right with the board if, if both people come to the next meeting?
I'm fine with it.
I don't think it's a good idea, because first of all, and I don't think you did this intentionally, but you kind of tied the Ingraham &amp; Smith issue with the Elmwood Village. They're two separate issues.
Yes, it's all about time.
Right. So that's number one. Number two, the, the Ingraham &amp; Smith issue, we have a lot of questions, I think, because it relates obviously to... it relates obviously to the, the plan to consolidate our, our, all of our schools on one campus. And I think we have a lot of questions about that. You know, certainly if a town council person wants to come visit us and talk to us, that is, I'm always welcome for that. But that would be an open session discussion and he could come at any time. He could come at a time that is perhaps more appropriate for us or at least better suits our schedule. That's, that's just my opinion.
So that's no for the 10th?
No, no for Sheehan on the 10th.
No for Sheehan on the 10th?
Right.
Okay, and yes for Sheehan on the 10th?
Yes, for Sheehan.
Antoinette?
No.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Claudia?
Uh, no.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're tied.
So it doesn't happen?
Doesn't happen. Okay. Other committee reports?
Yes.
Mr. Middleing?
This is pertaining to the consolidation. That was on, one of the topics on our fiscal planning committee, which was held on March 12th at 4:00 PM. We reviewed the response from three fiscal advisors, responses and have selected capital market advisors. This will be added to the next agenda for approval. We discussed the one response from the appraisal service from Petro in the amount of $13,000. The vendor will provide us appraisal for Hyview and Bailey. This will be added to the next agenda for approval. The committee also discussed construction manager, RFP, which is due back March 27. We received the draft two budget in the amount of $71,397,600 reduction from draft one included savings from the incentive offer, reducing equipment requests, removing additional staffing requested and remaining which our current student database rather than purchase a new one. In addition, in anticipation of further building project, we were also able to reduce minor building remodeling requests. Overall, we reduced draft one by $2,370,687. We still need to reduce expenses and increase revenue by $2,385,139 to remain under the tax cap. Our next meeting is April 16th. We also followed was the facility committee meeting, which took place immediately after our planning committee, fiscal planning committee. An update was provided on March 2nd, windstorm. We lost power at the administrative building, ECP, the welcome center and the bus garage. Generators were brought in. We did have flooding in ECP and welcome center and had to call in renew. Our insurance adjuster was on site and we will be submitting claims to our insurance company. A question was raised about steers at H, at Hyview. This is a part of the repair reserve project previously approved. Inquiries were also made about carpet tiles in the auditorium seating and the grass turf at RJ Bailey. Mr. Falcon will speak to the senior custodian regarding these items. A request was made for a breakdown of the emergency costs this year. Our next meeting is April 16th. End of my report.
Mr. Warner, I have a question or comment. He was finished. I just wanted to let you know since you couldn't see me.
Okay.
About the, I think the fiscal planning committee, was that the first one that you read, Lloyd?
Yes.
I think the, the, the issues that you, that the committee spoke about regarding the consolidation should have been discussed at the consolidation committee. We, as a board, created a committee to, to discuss the consolidation and it consisted of the entire board. We said, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but we said that obviously we're going to take on consolidation and we wanted the full board to participate and to discuss this. And I think, I think the fiscal planning committee, by going forward and, and reviewing proposals by potential vendors, overstepped its bounds because that's those things that, if I heard you correctly, those things are clearly about the campus consolidation and we clearly, and again, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, established a campus consolidation committee consisting of the full board. Am I incorrect?
Okay.
David, let me respond to that.
All right, go ahead.
Your point is well taken, but if I'm not wrong, the figures that I put out there in physical was dealing with money and that's the purpose of our committee. So I think, you know, to, to separate this, it doesn't make any sense. This is, this is what we discussed in the committee and I'm reporting what we discussed in the committee. What, do you agree with it or not?
I, I understand that you discussed it and whether I agree with it or not is not the issue. All, all I'm saying is that we have a campus consolidation committee. If, if you could, if you could read that to us again so that I'm clear, you were talking about campus consolidation issues. Yeah, they require money, but it is clear that it's campus consolidation. You could talk about any number of things, but you were talking about RFPs for capital, I forget the exact name of the group, but, and you talked about getting a, an appraisal for Hyview. That, that is, that is clearly campus consolidation. So again, that's all good and well. I know that happened at your meeting. I'm not disputing that it happened at your meeting. The point that I'm making is it probably shouldn't have happened at that meeting because we have, we have a campus consolidation committee that we as a board created and said that every board member should have been a part of.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
Because I'm a member of the committee. Mr. Williams, I see it a tad bit different. You're absolutely right. We do have a special committee to go specifically into depth about consolidation. However, I see this issue similar to the issue that arose when we had all of the weather-related issues on campus and that all of us had to be involved in decision-making with regard to repairs that came up. And we, as the facilities committee, felt like we should also be given information as it was happening, although we would also get information as the whole group. I think what Ms. O'Neil was presenting to us, and correct me if I'm wrong, was the companies that were gonna, were gonna go with because they came up with the most appropriate bid and she was just sharing that information with us. I think it's the same information that everyone's gonna get, but just as, as the fiscal planning committee, we, we received the information initially before we have our special meeting. That's how I looked at it. I didn't feel like we made any decisions without the rest of the board. I don't feel like we, you know, dug deep into it and asked them many questions at the board, whole, board as a whole would not be privy to.
First of all, I'm aware that a committee does not make any decisions for the board. So I did not say that. I did not imply that. I was very clear in what I said. The campus consolidation committee is about consolidating, is, is about consolidating our facilities on the campus. We created a, a committee of the whole so that we could all hear these things. What you described to me in your explanation, it's all good and well. Fact still remains, we have a campus consolidation committee. Issues about campus consolidation should be spoke, should be discussed at that meeting and that meeting, and that committee happens to be a committee of the whole.
All right. I think this is a, a golden opportunity for us to call a campus consolidation meeting. And I believe we had attempted to poll the board to find a date when everyone could show up. Ivy, what was the result of that poll?
As of earlier today, the majority of the board was able to make March 29th at 6:00 PM.
March 29th at 6:00 PM. Okay. And so that was six of the seven board members?
All board members had advised me that they could make it. One preferred an April date that was also provided, April 3rd. They preferred that, but they said that they could make March 29th work. And there was one other board member who stated that they needed to leave at 9:00 PM that evening.
Does anyone have any comments on, on this? Should we adopt this meeting date or does anyone, would anyone like to propose another meeting date? Antoinette?
Hi, I would like to propose another meeting date. That date is sort of like the eve of, of spring break. I will not be available because I have a, I'm taking my kid on a college tour, so I won't be available. I think that this is a very important discussion and I'm hoping that we can find a date where all members can be available to participate in it. I liked, I would like for us to possibly consider a, a different date in April. If I had to throw a date out there, I would like to throw out April 11th, I believe.
April 11th.
I won't be able to attend. I have a prior meeting.
All right. Who can attend? Take a look at your calendars, find out who can attend April 11th. So already we have a tie. Yeah?
Claudia said she couldn't.
She can't?
Yeah.
All right. So in that case, I think we should stick with it with the 29th.
Could we?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I defer to Claudia.
David, I'd like to propose that we, we actually find a date that all of us can be in attendance to. This is a, although we are, I feel, to some degree in a time constraint because we really want to move expeditiously forward, I think that it's difficult to do that without the entire board being present. This is something that we are as a whole committed to and to have members not in attendance, I think is a missing.
Is, is Saturday, April 7th? That's right after the spring break. Is that not a good day? Is Saturday difficult?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So why don't we, why don't we talk about this more at the next work session when we have had a chance to get more dates and perhaps we have one board member who's out sick and we can come back when that person is no longer out?
David, that's, that's a good idea, except our next work session is the 10th and the proposed dates for this meeting would have been before that. Did, did we, did we determine that the 3rd? I know we, I know six of, six of seven of us said the 29th worked. Did we determine that the 3rd didn't work? You said it didn't work for you, right?
Yeah, I'm visiting.
All right, right, okay, that, okay. So, so the 29th, okay.
So we're trying for all seven. You said it was important that we get all seven people if we can, so we can put it off a little bit until we can get all seven people. Let's all seven people weigh in.
Well, let me just ask this. Although the 7th, although I don't like typically, well, I'm gonna tell you in a second if you let me. We typically don't like meeting on a Saturday, but we have. Does, does this perhaps merit meeting on a Saturday?
It may, but we'll talk when Eric's back. All right, moving on. All right. I have one. Community Engagement Committee. At its February 5th meeting, members of the Community Engagement Committee requested information on the advanced learning program being implemented for our students in the fall of 2018. So in place of the regular CEC meeting, we elected to attend the ALP presentation at Hyview at 6:30 PM, which was last night. And Dr. Chase has already reported on that, okay? The one thing that I would add, it was, I, we had, there were over 65 parents in the room. Most of them were, were parents from LeF Jackson, Hyview and RJ Bailey. I think that we, we pretty much got a very positive response. It was a very thorough presentation. I would say that for those of the, you that, that didn't get to look at it, the advanced learning program PowerPoint presentation is available on the district website under Academics, Curriculum and Instructions, if you want to take a look at that. As a reminder, upcoming GCDSD events include March 22nd and 23rd. That's this Thursday and Friday, the RJ Bailey production of Annie. I think we heard about that. 6:00 PM at RJ Bailey. 4:19 and 20 and 21, the Woodland Spring Musical in the Heights, Thursday and Friday, 7:00 PM and Saturday, 5:00 PM. 4:28, the Greenberg Taste Off, we've heard about that. May 10th, the art gallery opening from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Greenberg Town Hall, featuring art from stu, all of our students across the district, from kindergarten on up to grade 12. We'll have live music. Maybe we'll have some singing and poetry reading. It's a, a good time will be had by, will be had by all and you can talk to some of the artists. May 15th, the annual budget vote and school board election and June 8th, the PTA Council Evening of Elegance and Recognition. The next CEC event is the superintendent's tea at slash CEC breakfast on April 18th from 9:30 to 11:00 AM at the district office. All are welcome. Any other reports? All right, the agenda. There are a couple of changes to the agenda. We're going to table item D6. So when we go through and do our, our, our adoption, we're not going to include D6. And in item E3, we're going to add the words families and stakeholders to the third whereas clause. So that's going to read something like, whereas it is the board's intent to engage parents, families, staff, stakeholders and community members throughout the process to make it slightly more inclusive. Other than that, we're going after the agenda as listed. Do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance items. Do I hear a motion to approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Business items. Do I hear a motion to approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student services. Do I hear a motion to approve the student services items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. New business. Do I hear any new business items? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.[1774.83]